I'll call the August 8th, 2023 Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. May we stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here. All right, are there any items for discussion from the public this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, yes, please. It's okay, you can go now.
I don't know when I go.
I'm new to this. Good evening. My name is Shannon Rourke and I am Children's Youth Services at the Huntington Woods Library. I'm also a resident in the sister city. And I am here to tell you exciting news about the library because Deb was unable to attend because she's working the polls. One, there's a Pleasant Ridge Dropbox in the rec center, which has already been very popular. It's full every single time we go to enter it.
Thank you.
I'm so happy for you. It's so much closer. So, summer reading was a big success and has come to an end. There are over 100 participants. And there were big parties. Kids had a hula hoop beach party and an inflatables reading finale party at the end. There were all kinds of donated prizes from local businesses, including Detroit Cookie Company and many more. But just so you know for next year. And upcoming events include tomorrow, there's a teen and tween scavenger hunt. I say this only, we are, one of our goals is to boost teen participation. Last year, I did one, which was the SAT practice exam. And of the 10 teens, six of them were from Pleasant Ridge. And that is getting repeated in January, so I knew to bring that one up. We have August 17th, Matthew Ball, the Boogie Woogie Kid, performing. A family game night on the August 24th. And then September 9th is library card signup month. So there's a huge event at the library outside Huntington Woods Rec Center with the Friends Ice Cream Social. Poetic Pottery will have a special activity for those that attend. And of course, bring your friends and neighbors so that they can come and sign up for a library card. And the October 14th, there is an author's fair at Huntington Woods Library. The authors from all over the county and beyond, children's and adults will attend. So please come and meet authors and they will have their books for sale and signing as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any questions for the library tonight? All right. Okay, we'll go on to the liaison reports.
Well, I was curious, like, how do late fees work with the Dropbox? Like, is there any?
Well, Huntington Woods doesn't charge late fees anymore.
Oh.
So there you go.
Good policy.
Takes care of that.
And that's a good question, but no worries.
Appreciate it.
That is excellent.
All right, Commissioner Lenko for school board.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's the summer, obviously, not anything significant. Schools coming back, though. The website will be updated by August 15th, so in the next couple of weeks. Although Robert did mention the administrators have been talking to parents. So I'm sure through the PTA organizations, you've been receiving lots of information. But as of the 15th, everything will be out on the website. And then circling back to the conversation about lower elementary Roosevelt and next stages. We do have the listening conversations on the radar. So Robert reiterated this as well. So really, back to schools around the corner, save for the last minutes of summer.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission and DDA meeting was moved from July and now they are going to meet on Monday, August 28th, 7:00 PM, right here at City Hall. So they're starting to do the work on the master plan. There will be lots of different opportunities for public engagement, including a citywide survey. So watch for more information coming up. It'll be, it's a great thing to participate in and you'll see lots of different activities around that because we want to know what you all want, you know, for your city and everything too, as we're all moving forward. The Woodward streetscape improvement along Woodward between Sylvan and up to Ten Mile around up Main Street will continue through November. At some point, the west end of Devonshire will be closed while they're doing a little bit of that reconfiguration at the entrance onto Woodward. But yeah, it's interesting. It's fun to watch and, you know, the traffic keeps changing, but it seems to be flowing really well, even though we're much more reduced than it will be once the traffic is, once all the construction is done. And then, so hopefully you can join us here Monday night at August 28th at 7:00 PM, right here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmier?
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, this is really exciting to have all of these people that I can talk to. So August 19th, 10:00 AM to noon, the Historic Museum will be open. So every month we are open, you can come check out your folder. It is also a great time to come buy your then and now book. So after years, the new then and now is ready. It's a fabulous book. So you can buy it at the Historic Museum, you can always buy it at City Hall. Commissioner Perry was out selling them recently and we will be selling them at future events. So you can always get them, but they are really, really wonderful. Historical has a workshop tomorrow that we are getting together to get ready for the Home and Garden Tour, which is happening on the 23rd. So mark your calendars for that. We will also be looking for docents soon. So if anyone wants to help volunteer, we will be reaching out, keep an eye on social media. But if anyone is interested, you can also reach out to me. And docent, being a docent is amazing. You get half price tickets, you get to come to the party afterwards, which is a lot of fun. And it's just a really great day in Pleasant Ridge. That's all I have. Thank you.
Do you know if the tickets for Home and Garden Tour are available yet or whether they'll be available?
They are not available yet. I do not know when imminently. And I will keep everyone posted.
And docents get half price tickets?
Discounted tickets. I shouldn't have said, I shouldn't have said half price. Now I've gotten nervous by the people. Discounted, discounted tickets. But also you get to come to the party afterwards, which I am planning this year. So that will be a lot of fun.
But docenting is fun on its own.
It is. I mean, you, yeah, it's a great way to interact and, yes, right, right. All of those things. So if anyone has any questions, you can certainly reach out. And again, you can find us at the Historical Mu, Historical Museum the third Saturday of every month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the 19th is another day for those of us that are car fans. So you'll see lots of historical stuff. But make time from 10 to noon for the museum if you'd like to see anything about your own home or what's going on around the city over time. Commissioner Budnick?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. So wrapping up summer and that sounds so depressing.
Yeah.
And this is what Shawnee would call a light, not too much going on or a light agenda. Few, few things going on. There's a 15 and up club day trip. And that will be Heavenly Sent Herb Garden and the Laundry. That's Wednesday, September 20th. The cost is $30 a person. Lunch cost on your own, the bus leaves Huntington Woods Community Center at 9:45 AM. And this includes a guided tour, cold or hot tea and a light snack. So please bring some cash for your own lunch. Adult swim, there are two dates, August the 9th and the 24th from 8:00 to 9:00 PM. There's also a teen only swim from, that's on Tuesday, August 22nd from 8:00 to 9:00 PM. And Labor Day pool hours will be 11:00 AM to 8:30 PM. Love those late summer days. The Huntington Woods Library Dropbox, Deb isn't here, but we already heard about that. So thank you for.
She's gone.
Thank you for filling us in there. PR t-shirts are still for sale at City Hall during business hours. And thank you to Ann and Katie for selling them. And then and now books at some of our events as well. And then Save the Date Fall Fest is on October 8th at Gainsborough Park. And the Next Ridge will be available online at the end of September with more fall programming. And finally Pavilion Rental. There, if anyone wants to rent the fireplace at Gainsborough, it's now free. There'll be a $100 security deposit. And, you know, just to ensure they get their equipment back and a copy of homeowner's insurance policy. And there is a link here that we can, I'm sure we can post. That said, we just wanted to update everybody so we can encourage some use. It's such a cool space and love to see people using it. And thank you, Mayor. I think that's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Onward to governmental reports. Do we have any governmental reports this evening? Actually, we have you up next after.
Don't worry.
So, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Couple exciting things to announce. It's kind of been a whirlwind week, but we did, you know, Ferndale Fire Department has offered home fire safety inspections to our communities and this is our community. But it's not always easy for people to find a time to schedule for us to come out and Mercy Run stuff. We actually just turned that into a virtual platform. So I have a website, I will be sharing, I will be creating QR code. I'll bring them over here, so it'll be available right here. You guys can put it on your website if you want. So somebody could just scan that, go to the website. It'll be linked off our page too. And essentially walk yourself through, answer some questions about your home, smoke detectors, different things. And it'll tell you, do you have enough? Do you not have enough? And then provide you with resources, information about those fire safety items on your home. So you'll have this nice resource that you'll have to refer back to at any time. So to really increase people's accessibility to us and our whole purpose is we want to keep people safe. So that's an amazing thing. So I'm really excited about that. And then we're going to be rolling out for businesses also.
It's great.
But the residential one is live right now. You guys are the first ones hearing about it, so you guys know about it even before Ferndale does. That's because I love you guys, I love all you guys. But the other thing is, I just found out last week, it was like early birthday present to me. I wrote a grant to the state of Michigan, workforce grant. I was awarded, or we were awarded the funding, which is amazing. And what it does is the state of Michigan identify that there's a significant shortage or severe shortage of paramedics in the workforce. And EMS is holding on by a thread. So they allocated a bunch of money, I wrote the grant, I was able to, I wrote for six funded position. What does that mean? Is people can actually put in applications to us right now. I have the application portal open online, so it'll say Ferndale firefighter, but just apply there. It's fine. More information come. But my idea was let's remove barriers to education for individuals. So if somebody that's already EMT wants to become a paramedic, but just has not been able to, maybe they couldn't find a way to pay for paramedic school or like, I can't lose the wages. It would take, take all the time off to sit in class. They'll actually get paid $15 an hour for their time they're spent in class. So for all the hours spent on paramedic school, $15 an hour pay. And then all the tuition and fees are paid for.
That's awesome.
So they essentially get hired on as a part-time employee with Ferndale. We over, the fire department receives the program and they go to school and get paid to go to school. And then when they're done, you know, we can help them get jobs. If we're going to try to hire on who we can, if not, we're, we have neighboring departments that we could try to place them there. So we just found out, I just got the news on that last week. I'm finalizing all the grant stuff with the state. But that's like really exciting news too. So that news article is coming out. So again, you guys are getting everything ahead of everybody else. So, because all that's like hot off the press. So it's exciting and it's great stuff for our community and for all of us. So other than that, I think that's all I got. If you have any questions for me?
That's a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's awesome.
I like bringing good news.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Something from the police today?
I'm deferring right now.
Oh, okay. All right, I think that's it for government reports then. We have, the next item is the consent agenda. I'm sorry?
We have their, it's after consent.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. And this month, we're basically approving our last meeting minutes, the normal disbursement reports and an item of correction or update on a contract with the state. Is there someone that might have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And now on to item number eight. We have something very exciting happen over the last few months. We learned that we received an award as part of the funding approval for the state of Michigan. We have our state representatives here tonight to talk about it a bit.
So we're really excited. As I'm dropping it. So, you know, we're really proud to be able to present this to Pleasant Ridge. Worked really hard. We had an unprecedented budget, but we got an enormous amount of funding. And I know in my talks with you, really asking what did your community need? Really went around to all of my municipalities to find out what they needed. And, you know, Mayor Scott really stressed on infrastructure and water system upgrades. And so really fought, we both fought very hard for this in the budget, in the State House, in the House, in the Senate. So we are so honored to present to you $1.8 million. I'm honored to represent you in the House, as I'm sure Senator McMorris is the same in the Senate. And we're just happy that we could be your voice and that we could advocate on your behalf to get these monies for you because it's needed. And just really proud.
Right. You know, we, we have a plan in place to get our water infrastructure repaired over time. This money will most definitely help us get that done faster. And the benefit to each household, I, just a quick math, is about $1,700 a household.
I know you were saying that.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
It's amazing. And, you know, Pleasant Ridge, you probably heard me give this statistic before. Pleasant Ridge is like one of two thirds of Michigan are small towns. We're under 5,000 people. It's easy for small towns to get ignored as funding happens because the bigger cities have really big problems. Well, this is a big issue for us to fix our water infrastructure. And with our city being 100 years old, our infrastructure is just in need of fixing like everybody's. And this really goes a long way to making that better.
I'm glad. Heard that loud and clear.
Thank you, Mayor Scott.
Thank you very much.
I'd love to add, you know, it's, it's an incredible honor for, I know, both Representative Scott and myself to be able to now represent this community.
Sure.
On behalf of redistricting, there were a lot of changes. And although we are not new to the legislature, Pleasant Ridge is new to both of us.
Absolutely.
And it's been a remarkable change that, you know, in, in my first four years in the legislature, and I'm sure you felt this as well, it often felt like so many of our communities, especially our smaller communities, were ignored. And now with a new majority, not going to make this partisan, but to be on the inside of the appropriations process. Because for my first four years, I made requests consistently for every single one of my communities and it felt like they were ignored. These are communities that, to your point, are more than a century old. This was not infrastructure that was built to withstand 100 years of damage and construction and builds and rebuilds. We now have more extreme weather events and record flooding than we ever could have imagined. So this is not going to solve everything, certainly, but it's a step in the right direction to make sure that our families and our communities are going to stay here and know that our infrastructure can sustain the growth that we all want to see happen. So it's an incredible honor. This is the first time, it's my fifth year, that we've been able to do this. I've never had the opportunity to present a big check to a community. So it's just, it's really incredible. I mean, thank you to my counterpart in the House. It's really wonderful to have a team that advocates and advocates loudly and to everybody who participated in letting us know what you needed. So thank you and hopefully this is the first of. We need to come.
And I'll tell everyone, and this again, and I, that's a nonpartisan statement. Lansing's ears are open. And I can't tell you how many times in the last six months I've been to Lansing. I've actually been to both of their offices. There is just a, there's just a change in the air in Lansing. Wherever you feel or fall politically, there's a change in the air in Lansing. And it's really, it's really helping all the communities. And I'm very much thankful for both of you for what you've done for ours. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
And please, to all of the members of the commission, to all of the residents who may be watching, everybody who's here, please stay in touch. Something that, that we often tell our locals is we can't advocate unless you tell us what you need. So you have all been incredible in keeping that line of communication open. Our doors are always open. It's only been the first seven months.
Right.
We're just getting started.
Believe it or not, yes.
Right.
And we're ready to go back right after Labor Day.
Absolutely.
To continue the work to delivering for our constituents.
See you in Lansing.
I enjoy having you on my committee. Please continue to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Sure.
And the committees that you guys have been telling us that you're working on and everything, it's so exciting because it's the stuff that, you know, we have ongoing issues with. And so to hear everything being addressed, so, you know, that you guys are working so hard on it. We really appreciate that.
Right.
You're welcome.
And more to come on the Woodward noise issue. I know we just mentioned.
House Bill 3154.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, we, we had a, a community meeting, a precinct potluck. And I know Commissioner Perry attended as well as Commissioner Schmier, who was so nice to meet you. Thank you for coming. More to come. We're hoping to have bill introductions very soon to ensure that our local municipalities have the ability to adopt and enforce local ordinances. Because this is a very unique situation where we have a state highway running through and bisecting many of our communities. It has been a pain in my, I won't stop there, since I took office. And now we actually have the ability to do something about it.
Awesome.
That is, that's very exciting. Because that one, you know, everyone wants the police to be able to just stop it. It's like, how do you stop this thing?
You can't.
Yeah.
I also want to add that on the 30th, we are having a energy task force meeting here. I'm chair of Energy and Common Tech in the State House. And we will be having it at the community center from 6:00 to 8:00. So please go, feel free everyone to come out and express your concerns if you've had any concerns with DTE. I'm being a little facetious? I'm sure you have. So please come out and express them. The task force, have a nine-member task force, very interesting in listening and hearing to what your concerns are. Because we will be developing a package of bills when we go back to roll out to make some changes. And I'm chair of Energy and Common Tech in the State.
Yay.
Just in case no one needs that.
Did you say 6 o'clock?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, awesome, on the 30th?
On the 30th.
And then where are you guys this weekend? Is there a thing?
Yes, there, the energy, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
We are having a thing this weekend.
We both have things. Absolutely.
I have a thing tomorrow, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
In Flint, actually, it's another task force meeting. So if you wanted to join by Zoom, we can make sure you have that link. But yes, Mallory and I.
You know, we have a joint neighborhood resource fair. So both Representative Scott and my district is Detroit and Oakland County combined. So in Palmer Park this Saturday, we're going to be bringing out a number of state departments, a number of private companies, we're going to have resources and free ice cream. So Ice Cream Social, come out, enjoy nice.
And Annabelle the Clown as well, that was here this past Saturday. We had our ice cream social in Pleasant Ridge. So please come out.
Oh, that's great.
Awesome.
And free backpack giveaways donated by AT&amp;T from the committee with Common Tech.
The families were thrilled at all the stuff the kids could get. And when, you know, the, I think the tattoo person went away, but then the little boy just loved the, the face mask thing. You know, the COVID's face protector, he thought that was a great toy. So it all works out.
Well, she'll be there this Saturday as well.
Good.
Awesome.
All right.
You guys, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to be of service and to be your voice in Lansing.
Can we get a quick picture?
Absolutely.
Oh, sure, let's all take a picture.
The timing is so perfect. Lot to celebrate. Go ahead, no, no, I'm too close.
Oh, my goodness. Is this where I give rabbit ears?
It's a good picture.
It is a great. All right. Guys are clubbing.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Everybody give a hug.
Yeah. Just set it right there. We're going to cash that in the morning.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you so much. Yeah, it's all right, Mr. Murray. We'll see you on the 30th, for sure. Cool, cool. Off north, random north trip, so. I was supposed to go to the Ice Cream Social on Saturday that Scott hosted. And then I had to back out. It was a random trip. So I was just explaining to her the happenstance behind me, saying I'd go and then changing.
It's August. Good job.
All right. It is, yeah.
That was a fun one.
All right, after that, we're going to talk about food for a little bit. Item number nine on our agenda is license, liquor license. Jim?
Yes. We have an application before us from Romolo Pizza. Also, the application is under Ponte Sisto LLC, doing business as Romolo Pizza, Romagna and Vino. They are proposing to bring in a Class C license from outside the community. So transferring in an existing Class C license to reoccupy the Cork space with a new business. At the proposed floor plan for the business is nearly identical to Cork, with the exception that they're adding a takeout counter for lunch service. If you've been to Cork, the room, they had the big table in it. That's being converted to the lunch counter. So it's directly accessed off the parking lot. In the, in the memo, there's a few items which need to be addressed. There's some inconsistencies with hours of operation among a few of the documents that need to be cleaned up. And then there's one other item that needs to be cleaned up with parking and valet service. It's unclear from the current application documents how they're intending on handling that. There's a reference to West Fairwood. So that just needs to be clarified with further information before the public hearing on September 12. So tonight, this is being introduced to you and we have the applicants here and they can tell you more about the business and their plan. The action that we'll be taking or asking the commission to consider tonight is to schedule a public hearing for the September 12 meeting.
Right.
We will, our liquor control ordinance requires notice be mailed to all houses in the city. So once the public hearing is scheduled, we'll do that and make sure that everyone knows about this on the September agenda. You also have the opportunity to discuss the plans for the restaurant and their operating plans and bring up any items that you'd like them to consider. We know we had Cork that operated there for many years. We know that we worked through a number of issues with Cork with neighborhood interface. There's, you know, houses that are 30 feet from the building.
Right.
That was, you know, there, there's some experience there. So please feel free to bring any, you know, historical concerns or forward-looking concerns you may have with the applicant.
Right.
With that, I think we can, unless there's any questions from the commission, we do have the applicants here.
Right. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I don't have a check with me, but. Good evening. Thank you for the time. My name is Dario, Dario Carini with my partner CJ and Kelly. So yeah, we're excited to finally get this business up and running, hopefully soon. It's been a process now over probably a year and a half to get the liquor license situation sorted out and everything else. But we're really looking excited, looking, we're looking forward to being part of the community. I think for me, that was the most important thing, to have the business set in a place that has a community feel, we can be involved and make it a neighborhood restaurant, excuse me, neighborhood restaurant. So that's our, our goal first and foremost.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one question for you, just having read through your application. And it's more related to how businesses operate post-COVID. There wasn't a mention of delivery service or a van or a food truck or any of those things? I'm just curious if any of those are part of your plan for the business?
Yes, delivery would be through third party, like a DoorDash, Uber Eats. Yep, it wouldn't be our own, it would be through a third party. But we'll definitely have that.
All right. And are you planning on specific parking or any requirement for, for that part of your business?
I think what we talked about was using the back for the DoorDash drivers to pick up through that back entrance in the alley. That was what we mapped out. And the valet, we got to talk about probably a little bit more. That was the carryover from the previous restaurant.
Okay.
By the way that that was mapped out.
And my suggestion would be to add that to the discussion of the valet and just make sure it's documented so everybody's comfortable for the public hearing.
Absolutely.
Were there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind?
Um.
Couple contractors on.
Cool.
A few things around the building. So that needs to open outward versus.
Cool.
Inward.
Great. I had a couple.
What's happening with, what's happening with Cork? So uh, it's really exciting to see uh, it move along. And, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I, just a couple of questions. So just wanted to circle back on the direct line, et cetera. Um, have you met the neighbors?
Yes, for, yeah, they're, the boxes are still there. We we have to keep up on that.
And we see rats everywhere, like on all, like, but like, if rats become a problem.
Okay, may I have a second? Support. Any other discussion? How may we have a vote?
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes. We uh, received a petition in December from the residents of the first block of Sylvan, uh, a traffic calming petition. I think ninety-four percent of the residents along that block uh, signed on. Uh, we did a survey uh, in June of this year, um, and also collected some traffic count data in May to supplement traffic count data we already had from September twenty twenty-two and August twenty fifteen for that block of Sylvan. Um, we know that 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 particular block of Sylvan is kind of our second level. Uh, there's really three tiers. There's Woodward Heights, Ridge, Oakland Park. Tier one for just in terms of traffic uh, volumes. Um, tier two is Sylvan, Millington, Oxford. Uh, those all get about twelve to, well, eighteen hundred uh, in May of twenty twenty-three on this block of Sylvan. And then all the other streets in town are under um, really eight hundred cars per day. So um, this block does see some traffic. It's the connection across Woodward. There's the light. Um, so there's a lot of reasons why this this particular block collects a lot of traffic. Um, after doing the uh, survey, well, let me run through. So this is some of the traffic count data, and you'll see that there's uh, three colored dots. Uh, there's a a green one, that's twenty fifteen, the red dots twenty twenty-two, and the yellow dots uh, May of this year. So these are average speed and eighty-fifth percentile speed uh, by average daily cars. Um, and you'll see that there's a lot of counts that have been done over here. This is Ridge, Woodward Heights uh, in Indiana, or I'm sorry, um, Oakland Park. We just, we've measured them a lot, uh, because they are our highest um, traffic streets. And you see that, um, you know, generally speaking, uh, the average speed and eighty-fifth percentile speed, they they cluster uh, for all of the streets in town. So there's, there's not a lot of uh, uniqueness to this block of Sylvan in terms of average speed or eighty-fifth percentile speed. And in fact, they're lower um, for this block. Um, partially because it's a short block, the light, uh, there's a lot of reasons why it's probably a little bit lower. And it's not to discount the fact that, you know, we get this complaint everywhere on every street in town. And I think part of it is, you know, when you're outside of a car, the perception of speed is a little bit different than when you're inside a car. Sometimes a car going twenty-five miles an hour feels like it's going a lot faster when you're next to the street um, than it than it really is. And that's just a common, um, that's a common perception. But um, so looking at the data, i- it doesn't really show that speed or or uh, is a notorious issue here, but that's not to say that, you know, we can't do better. So we look at percent of traffic, uh, about forty percent of cars are speeding on this block of Sylvan. Where we really want to focus, the real issue is when you start to get to the percent of traffic that's going over thirty miles an hour, uh, and then particularly thirty-five or forty. And we know that really about three percent of cars go over thirty-five miles an hour on every street whenever we do a traffic measurement. Um, it's it's about three percent. Um, it does range between about one and five percent, but it it's it's that three percent number is a pretty good rule. And then percent of traffic going over forty miles an hour is usually about half a percent of cars that do that. And those are the dangerous cars. Um, we know just from crash data, if you get hit by a car at twenty miles an hour, you're going to survive. If you get hit by a car going thirty miles an hour, um, probably not. So bringing in those tails is where a lot of the effectiveness of traffic calming happens. Um, we have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit law in the state. We can't set speed limits lower than twenty-five miles an hour. Most of our streets are designed for thirty mile an hour traffic. So we're fighting the design of our streets um, in in a way, and that's why the eighty-fifth percentile speed is usually around thirty miles an hour, um, twenty-eight to thirty. So um, again, this is just the the traffic volume by speed from Sylvan um, in uh, May of this year. So you see the twenty-five mile an hour speed limits here. So I think what we want to try to do is bring in these tails and reduce those outlier speeds. Uh, one of the things, effective traffic calming does require painful changes. Um, it's not effective unless it makes drivers feel uncomfortable when they're driving on the street. Um, so a lot of times we get resistance to traffic calming elements that we might want to put in, but that's the point, is they have to be uncomfortable. So there's generally two kinds of traffic calming. There's horizontal or vertical elements. Horizontal elements um, constrain the width of the street and create deflections that cars have to travel through. Vertical elements are speed bumps, humps, or tables, and they require cars to slow down at a specific point. Speed bumps or humps are not something that we offered as an option on Sylvan. It is an important connection across. It's how the police get across to get to the east side. And so um, for that reason, uh, Ferndale doesn't put speed humps on fire routes. And this could be considered a hu- a fire route because it is the crossing across Woodward in town that has a light. So I don't think speed humps are a um, are are something that we want to consider here. Uh, but there are a number of horizontal elements. So the recommended approach would be to allow parking on both sides of the street, to test that for up to a year. Uh, we'll continue to monitor volume and speed during the test. We have our radar box, and we'll continue to use that to see um, how things change. And the best part about this is it's essentially free to implement these traffic calming measures and see how they work. Now, one of the concerns is emergency vehicle access. So making sure, uh, we did check guidance on this. So there's NACTO. Uh, they recommend twenty-four to twenty-eight foot wide cross-section uh, with parking on both sides of the street. Sylvan's twenty-seven feet wide. Um, Birmingham has a number of streets that have parking on both sides of the street that are twenty-four feet wide. Um, but of course, Sylvan is an important street for emergency vehicles. So with it being twenty-seven feet wide, um, your parking lanes are typically seven or eight feet. That's what you need to park a car and then have a little bit of clearance. So when you have twenty-seven feet and then parking on both sides, your minimum clear space is going to be eleven to thirteen feet through that pinch point. So it creates a yield condition where one car has to stop and wait for the other car to come through. But for an emergency vehicle, um, that eleven to thirteen feet is sufficient for for an emergency vehicle to get through. Um, Woodward lanes are eleven feet wide, uh, six ninety-six lanes are twelve feet wide. So the only time this even comes into play is if you have two cars parked directly across the street from each other, and then an emergency vehicle has to get through. So a lot of things have to come together, but we still have width for emergency vehicles to get through, um, to get through that space. Um, Ohio has some traffic calming, some good traffic calm- calming guidance measures, the Ohio Department of Transportation. They specifically had a guidance on the maximum daily, average daily traffic uh, on a street to be able to implement a yield street. Um, and there's just two, no more than two thousand cars per day. So we know that Sylvan had about thirteen hundred cars per day, um, twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-two. In Mar- May of this year, we counted eighteen hundred cars per day. So I'm not sure uh, if that five hundred car increase was just a time-specific thing. There was some thing going on that increased traffic, um, or if that's an actual increase in the, you know, the daily traffic, if that will persist. So I'm looking forward to getting some more counts there and see how that number changes over time and evolves. To see if that's a new normal, or if that was a, you know, outlier, and it really is thirteen hundred cars per day. But regardless, the, based on the guidance, um, I'm comfortable that it's doable to do parking on both sides of the street with the traffic volumes that we see out there. Um, so that's uh, that's the recommended plan. The uh, motion in your packet is to approve a temporary traffic control order to allow parking on both sides of the street on Sylvan for a period of up to a year. Um, the other um, consideration, of course, is that we do have businesses uh, that are along there, and when uh, there was permit parking on Sylvan, um, the law office has been largely vacant, so it's been a dormant issue, but that would continue, uh, resident parking by permit. Uh, we don't anticipate there being a large increase in the number of cars parked on the street, just redistributing where they are to create some of these, um, some of these elements. I know one resident of Sylvan has been actually taking their car and parking it on the north side of the street to pre-test this on their own. And uh.
Is that you, Kate?
Zach.
We will, uh, we appreciate, we appreciate the help and the uh, the infinite verification, but yeah, um, that would be the the recommended motion.
Okay.
Um, at the end of the period, we'll reconnect. And of course, I'm I'm sure we'll hear from the residents of Sylvan during the test period, and then we'll reconnect with them in a formal way to gain feedback towards the end of the test period and figure out if this is something we want to make permanent. Um, if we learn some things about, you know, maybe not parking on both sides of the street, but maybe, you know, if we find that a permanent pinch point or chicane somewhere along the street would be effective, based on our experience with the parking, we could go in that direction. So, you know, this is, this is a a temporary first step towards figuring out what our long-term implementation would be.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, um, may we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to implement a temporary traffic control order to allow pla- parking on both sides of Sylvan between Woodward, the Woodward Alley and Indiana for a period not to exceed one year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion amongst us?
I'm curious, in the uh, test period, would it, it sounds like it's twelve months then? Is it like eight or tw- up to twelve? Like, are we going to define what the specific number of months is? And then like, if we were to roll it back or, I don't know, maybe roll it forward up to the next block on Sylvan? Like, are there steps along the twelve-month timeline that we can look at this? And what does that look like? How does that get initiated?
So the the up to twelve months is really just to allow us to react to how things go. Um, you know, if we find after six months that the residents of Sylvan are are screaming at us and, you know, it it's a huge failure, then we can just, you know, wrap it up.
Okay.
If we find that it's working fine and everyone gets used to it after a period, we can go for the full twelve months. Um, the the process for other blocks to adopt this would be for them to petition, to use the same petition process that the first block did. Uh, but this will be an interesting proof of concept to, you know, for, to see how that goes.
And then so in that survey, so I just go in for memory, it was like seven in favor of the parking on two sides, and then two and two, do, there were like ten respondents to that particular portion?
Yeah, you could pick more than one option for that.
Okay, and that was my next question then. So you could pick more than one. All right, all right.
It wasn't exclusive.
Okay, then. Um, all right. And then so like, if there's a whole bunch of accidents in the next three months, uh, like, like, how are we measuring this, I guess?
I highly doubt there's going to be a lot of accidents, but.
An accident is a, uh, I guess, a a relative word, like a vehicle smashing into another and taking off a side view mirror, probably, some might call it an accident.
Could be.
So.
So, yeah, well, we we'll see. Um, there, I don't, there's no, you know, predetermined criteria. It's, we'll know how it's going. We'll be collecting data.
Okay.
So we'll have the vehicle count and speed data, which we can continue in the time series. The rest of it will be qualitative. And uh, I'm I'm certain that we'll hear from the residents of Sylvan about how that's going.
Mm-hmm, cool. And it's all coming through the phone then? Phone and email would be the channels, and then at a certain, we'll just have a sense of it. We'll make a decision based on the sense.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, please.
Thanks. Um, I want to thank the residents of Sylvan for coming forward with this. You know, they recognized as we were looking at Woodward Heights and different solutions there that this will, and this could impact them more, and there's already a problem that they're having in that, that the first block really um, act, took action in trying to get it solved. So I want to thank you all for trying this out, too. Because it is, it's such a smart, low-cost option, something to try. And with the way traffic patterns have changed so drastically since COVID and have stayed just, people's driving has um, has gotten very, much more um, scary in the past uh, couple of years. So I just want to thank you all for trying this. Because it is, you know, one of the things Jim said, and it was in an email that went out to you guys, but it's like you cannot have streets designed for free flow traffic and expect anything different than, you know, the traffic that we get. You know, you can't expect a cop to be there at any moment, you know, just when somebody happens to do something badly. So, thank you. I think it'll be fun. A fun, interesting, I shouldn't say fun, because traffic is never fun.
Traffic is fun.
I think it'll be really interesting to watch. So thank you.
Yeah, I I'm looking forward to seeing um, how it works. Uh, I don't, I don't think we know exactly how it will work. I think there's an opportunity for it to make an improvement. Uh, but there could be some side effects that we're not aware of, and we'll find out on the test. That's why we call it a test.
But the other thing I did want to say is, yeah, this isn't like it's the first time this is happening in history anywhere in the world. I mean, it's two streets over in Ferndale. It's parking on both sides. And, you know, it's Birmingham, all these other places use the, this um, this.
This method.
This method all the time. So thank you for doing this here.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment again that I think Sylvan for being proactive and being open to these, to this test. And I just wanted to comment that the truth is, it's probably going to be a little uncomfortable at the beginning. I mean, it is. And so I think it's going to really entail not only patience, but also communication. You know, letting the city, letting us know how it's going, but also knowing that it is going to be uncomfortable. It is going to be a transition. It might not be pleasant until we we get used to it. So, yeah, just being a little flexible at the beginning, knowing it's a test and knowing that it will be uncomfortable. And the point of it is to be a little uncomfortable because there's no way to manage that traffic, as Jim said, without making people uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Traffic isn't going away. There's no magic wand to s- to fix this. I mean, if there was, we'd all be waving, but there's not. So. So, yeah, so just be patient and communicate, and I think everyone's on the same team here.
I think that's the really important point, is the patience with watching, because people have to adjust to this new thing, too. So.
For sure.
Mayor, I I just wanted to add, yeah, I I like the fact that Sylvan, there are stakeholders in this. This is in a, it's, A, it's immediate that we can implement this, and B, we we have subjective feedback from the stakeholders, which is great. And then we have tangible, real data from the traffic counter and the speed counter. And I think that's kind of what Commissioner Lenko was getting at, is having some of that data will be interesting to see because we can glean hopefully something for for, as we move, move forward, and traffic has diametrically changed. So it, I'm really curious to see what what happens. I'm I'm excited. Uh, hopefully it works really well, and we don't have a lot of emails. That said, I'll be curious to see what we do, what we do get back and how this this works and looking through and sifting through that. So. I'm excited. Yay.
Yes.
Hopeful.
Yes.
Indeed.
Yeah.
All right, um, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Stay tuned for cool things on uh, Sylvan.
We'll be nervous starting tomorrow.
Sorry, one last question. So what does this mean? Does it, like, do we put the paper bags over the no parking signs and tomorrow?
So, so implementation.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't park within twenty-five feet of an intersection. So we're going to have to define where that twenty-five feet is from Indiana. Uh, and then also the alley. We'll remove the no parking signs. We'll put in new parking permitted uh, signs at that twenty-five-foot location. So it's going to take, we're going to have to install some signs. So it'll be a couple of weeks before things take effect.
Okay.
We'll probably also need to get a a couple of signs fabricated, like new, you know, new traffic pattern, parking now permitted, both sides of the street. Just put those on the signs as well to communicate to, you know, not only people parking, but also drivers to, you know, expect that this is going to be the case, and please try to have a little bit of grace about it, but most people will.
And then the test time also gets us through the construction on Woodward. So whatever variable that might be adding to the equation will go away. I suspect that the May number was because Woodward was down to two lanes, I think, in May. So that's probably part of it.
Right.
And we'll um, we'll learn a lot more over the next up to a year.
Yes. And I'm I'm going to go get the, get the radar counter out there before we change anything one more time. I really want to see what traffic is now.
Right.
Compared to to May.
Right. Okay. Okay. I think we're ready for the next topic, our investment report.
Yeah. I just wanted to give you an annual update on a couple of things. We, obviously we have fund balances. So we looked at Michigan Class. It's a, it's an alternate investment pool that over 200 Michigan communities are members of. We did join that and moved in May and June. And we did see a 5% return on that money in June, which was a significant improvement over what we're seeing from Oakland County. I think a lot of this comes down to investment philosophy. Michigan Class is invested in more short-term instruments, which are more responsive to market conditions and interest rates. Oakland County is in a lot of longer terms, sometimes up to two or three-year instruments. Oakland County is invested in a lot of mortgage securities, whereas Michigan Class is in more commercial paper and short-term, short-term bond notes. So there's some different investment philosophies there. They both have a similar risk profile. None of these are leveraged. They're not lending this money out. Neither one of them has ever lost principal in the decades that they've existed. So that's good. But we'll look forward to continuing this performance going ahead. One thing we did was we basically split, we had about $5 million total between the two. And we have that about two-thirds or 60%, 40% between the two funds. We may look at, you know, moving some more money from Oakland County over to Michigan Class in the short term. Just because.
The yield is high.
The, and the difference is great between the two. Yeah, when, when you look at it, it's, it's, for every million dollars a year, you're talking about $40,000 difference in return on that, on those funds. And that's significant. We also have our Parks Endowment Fund. So this is something, this is an annual report for how that did last year. You can see the endowment fund balance over time. We have withdrawn $300,000 from that to support recreation projects over its lifetime. But it has increased in value by 37% even with those withdrawals. Last year was a good year. We, we saw an increase of $272,000, which partially made up for the bad year in 2022. But the endowment fund can be invested under pension fund rules. So we're in a 70-30 equity bond mix. And that's just in the broad stock market, bond market through Vanguard. So very low fees with that. When you look at lifetime annual return, it's about 4.5, 4.05% per year for the endowment fund. If you add back in those $300,000 of withdrawals, then the annual return's about 5.4%, which is pretty good. If you compare that to a money market scenario, which is what we could be invested in if this was, if these funds weren't in the endowment fund under the separate rules, they would be in basically a money market. Our annual return would have been negative 0.9% with the $300,000 of expenditures. Or if you add those $300,000 back in, our annual return would have been a little bit less than 1%. So we've done quite a bit better by creating the endowment fund. There's been some benefits. We were able to reduce the Parks Millage that was approved by the voters in 2015 for Gainesboro Park. The, the plan was to reduce, last year the City Commission voted to reduce that Parks Millage when the water infrastructure millage was coming online. And we were able to do that because the endowment fund is going to repay the remainder of that millage to pay off the Gainesboro Park project. That's an average savings of about $215 per household that the endowment fund has, has generated. It's also paid for three major capital improvements. The community center patio, the pool pavilion, and of course, the Gainesboro Pavilion. And these were done with about 20% Pleasant Ridge Foundation funding and 80% Parks Endowment Fund funding. So it's important to note that, you know, no, no tax dollars were used. Property tax money was not used to build those projects. That all came from the endowment fund. And I know that because I know the guy who built two of them, he would tell me every day the comments he got about how we were wasting tax money when they were building those. So, but we weren't. So I just wanted to give an update on what our investment position was and how that fared over the past year and also looking forward to the future.
There's been a lot of, of concern given the volatility of the stock market. But thankfully, our savings have actually paid off for us and paid for things for us. So it's a good story.
Right. Especially with the endowment fund, you have to be aware, you know, things go up and things go down. But over the long run.
It pays off.
It always, it always returns better.
Thank you. That's, that's exciting.
All right. I think we're ready for the city manager's report. How are you going to top that?
I'm not. I'm not going to top that or that. I think we'll have to put that out on display for a while. That was a, that was a.
Some of these cash checks?
That was a pretty significant win, getting awarded that. When you looked at the list of projects and awards that were made to neighboring communities, we did really well compared to a lot. So this is going to be a big help. We've, we've started design work on the Oakdale Water Main Project because this is going to allow us to accelerate that project with this funding. I don't know when we'll get the money. You know, this is a very nice-looking check, but it's not the real check.
Right. I tried cashing it with my app.
Didn't work? So, yeah, so details on that, you know, I don't know. That's all to be worked out amongst the state. You know, they've, they've approved the budget, but they haven't made the appropriations yet. So TBD on that. But we're getting ready. Like I said, we're, we're doing the design work for Oakdale a year early. So the plan now is to be ready to go with that project. We also have our drinking water state revolving loan fund application in. So hopefully with the increased funding that's been made available to that, hopefully we have a chance to get our project funded through the revolving loan fund. That would allow us to ideally accelerate the entire water infrastructure project because they're still making loans at 2% a year. So we could take that money and, you know, get the project done. And then we'd have certain, cost certainty going forward because that'd be a loan that we'd be repaying.
Round out the uncertainty of the cost of materials and labor.
Exactly.
Right.
Yes. So we're hopeful. You know, it's a challenge. One of the big criteria for the drinking water revolving loan fund is disadvantaged communities. They put a lot of, that's worth a lot of points in their formula. And of course, we're in the top 1% for income in the state. We are not a disadvantaged community. So that's always an uphill battle for us, particularly with the drinking water revolving loan fund. But hopefully this year with, with all the extra allocations the state has made to that, hopefully the pie is bigger and we have a chance to, to get there. We're at the top of page three out of five full pages of projects that were, in, in terms of scoring for that. So there's a chance. But it's frustrating because last year they gave GLEWA, they awarded $250 million last year out of the drinking water revolving loan fund. And they gave $75 million of that to GLEWA to build a water main. So I don't know. It's hard.
It's hard to say why and how.
It's hard to square that circle, but, yeah. So we will see.
That's part of the reason, you heard me say it this evening. I've been making it a point to just to go to Lansing and talk about small towns and how hard big projects are for small towns to help guide that discussion around what the two-thirds of communities are going to do that aren't Detroit or Lansing or Benton Harbor or what have you, that really do need help to get these big projects done. It's, it, you know, some of it is mandated, some of it we have to do. I mean, our, we're fortunate that we haven't had to build, rebuild a water main in literally 100 years.
Right.
So, but we're heading towards a lot of those projects. I do encourage everyone to come to the workshop on the 30th with our conversation with, about the electricity in the city because that's going to be interesting. And just knowing what conversations have been had in other cities. This is another infrastructure topic that you'll hear a lot about.
Yes. And the other thing on water is we got our, our 2023 testing results back. And again, we were well under the limit. The current limit is 15 parts per billion for lead. That's the federal limit and the Michigan limit currently. Michigan is moving to 12 parts per billion and then, I think, next year or two years from now. Our 90th percentile value is around six parts per billion. So again, that's where we've always been. In a way, you know, if we exceeded that, we'd get more points in our drinking water revolving loan fund.
What do you need me to do?
But, you know, our water quality here is actually good.
Yeah.
Relatively speaking. I mean, no amount of lead is safe, of course. But you, you know, it's impossible to have no lead with the system we have. So we meet our, and well exceed, or rather are well below federal limits and state limits. So, yeah. Yeah, and Woodward continues. We'll be done with that in the next few months.
Okay.
Yeah, I have nothing else unless there's any questions for anyone.
Any questions?
I got one kind of general question about survey and master plan and kind of bifurcate. Like, so we've talked about doing kind of a general survey and we're also kind of talking about a master plan survey. I'm wondering, are they connected? Are they, you mean two separate?
Two separate.
Okay.
So we are doing a general community survey and that's actually going to be coming out quite soon. Thanks for the reminder. I should have mentioned that before. But expect to see a postcard in everyone's house announcing this. This is a broad community survey about just major, you know, major issues and Pleasant Ridge, you know, what, what that is. But issues that, you know, are on people's minds. We are doing a time series, so we're asking again a bunch of questions we asked probably seven or eight years ago. Not development-focused. I think some of these results will be instructive as we put together the RFP and start to scope out the master plan. There'll be a separate survey focusing on strictly development issues with the master plan. So we're not ready yet to talk about those development issues because we haven't gotten to that point with the process. But, so, yeah, two separate ones, not a little bit of overlap between the two, but not much. So you won't hear about things like accessory dwelling units or, you know, senior housing or any of those other common topics that come up on this community survey. Those will be on the development survey later.
Thank you. Anything else for Jim?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just going to say, no, this is really encouraging, getting this, about 7% of the total cost of the whole, the entire water overhaul. So that's, that's exciting. And I would say, I know in terms of income, we're not disadvantaged relative to other folks, but our water system is certainly disadvantaged. We have 70 to 80%, you know, lead lines going to our homes. So there are, there are other measures and we, we're a small community. So obviously our, our state rep and senator saw some value that we, we, they had to go to bat for us. And I, I'm really encouraged by, by your help as well. And this is, it's exciting to get some cash. And hopefully, I heard them say, oh, there's more to come. So I'm waiting to see them again. All righty. We'll see what else we can, we can scrounge up, but that's.
Shaking that tree.
Yeah, it's encouraging because I think they're, they had to have a leg to stand on. And being a small community in one that has an antiquated water system, that, that's, that counts for something.
I think this puts us over $5 million of.
Right.
Grants and outside funding we've brought in in the last two years.
Wow.
It's been good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
On shaking the tree, is there any benefit to reminding them of the previous state of state revenue sharing and how it's kind of tapered off? And, and I thought too, like unfunded mandates weren't allowed, right? So.
Well, a group of communities did sue the state over the lead service line replacement and.
They didn't.
So we tried.
So, but I'm just saying, like, as, as just a reminder, like, as we're asking for more funds, there are kind of like two lever, not levers, but two points in the timeline where, like, it may, I don't know, those point scores might need to be recalibrated based on these other changes.
Right. Well, I mean, the drinking water revolving loan fund is a separate, that's what has the point scores. The point about the shared revenue, absolutely valid. I know I've made that point to Senator McMorro among a few other things in some meetings that we've had. So, yeah, definitely keeping that top of mind. And I think they recognize that to a point at the state because, you know, they have made it a point to restore and increase some shared revenue funding. It's nowhere near what we've lost, you know, over the last two decades, but.
And money's fungible. Like it, right. I understand it's in all these buckets, but also moves and spends pretty fluidly.
Once we get it, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I did have other business. I'm very sorry.
No problem.
I was sitting there reading it and forgetting to actually say it. The, thank you, Mayor. The, the, there, okay, we have a wonderful resident, Jessica Wright, who, she's in a band and she saw that there's this international front porch concert day that is on August 26th. So she has worked very hard and has gotten, pulled it together for the city. So save the, save the date. I think tomorrow you'll start seeing signs out on lawns. It is something, it's a citizens initiative type thing. But, so she's calling it Porch Sessions. So I think you can find it online at Pleasant Ridge Porch Sessions. So August 26th from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. I've heard there's a VIP after hour thing as well. I'll let you know, but it's, we don't have to worry about it. The, but it's going to be a really cool concert. So watch for that. Also Ridge Resale is going to be open tomorrow for a special event. August 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., they're going to have a, nope.
Today's the 8th.
Oh, the, oh, the 9th. Okay, great. I thought you said 9:00 p.m. Because I've been corrected on that one too. The, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. tomorrow, August 9th at Ridge Resale, which is like 92 Amherst. You can find it down there. But they'll also be open on Saturday, August 12th at, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So watch for that. The.
Ridge Resale and then Adult Swim. So you might be able to find something to wear to Adult Swim at Ridge Resale.
You really could. And then there's also, the Garden Club has been doing, every Thursday night, they're been, they have been doing a weed and wine, or weeding and wine, we might call it.
I almost, sorry, I made a face.
In these times, it is weeding and wine. And so they need some help. And it's a great way if you can't maybe fully join the club or something like that and you just want to come out and help for a couple of hours. They're helping, they're working right over here in the, the Wildflower Garden and in the, at Memorial Park. Just weeding and chatting with your neighbors and they have wine and you can bring whatever.
When is that?
It is every Thursday, starting at 7:00. And then the Women's Club is also going to have one of their membership dinners. It's coming up in early September and I will let you know the date. Reach out to me if you want to know more information. But that's all I have.
All right. I'll, I'll add one. I wanted to give my condolences to the friends and families of Kathy Gillis. She was a longtime member of our community. Practically everybody in town had some interaction with Kathy at some point. And really just a light in the community. So I thought I would just give a quick word for her and, and to her family and friends. Rest in peace.
And no services.
No services. I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I don't know. We'll find out.
I just found out.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Private ceremony.
Okay, very good. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.